All right, this is the time we set, excuse me, for our public hearing on the amendment to the existing ordinance to create and become a member of the Central Connecticut Solid Waste Authority. So I will read the public notice. My voice doesn't crack? The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Granby has called for a public hearing for the purpose of hearing public comment regarding the amendment of the existing ordinance to create and become a member of the Central Connecticut Solid Waste Authority. The hearing will be held on Monday, October 7th, 2024, at 6:45 PM in the Town Hall Meeting Room 15 North Granby Road, Granby, Connecticut 06035. The draft ordinance is available at the Town Manager's Office or the Town Clerk's Office. The public is invited to attend, and written testimony is welcome. So I have also received a certification, thank you Scott for helping produce this, that the notice was properly published. And I don't really have any opening statements, you guys will remember this, we discussed this at our Board of Selectmen meeting, I think about a month ago. The amendments are necessary to get us back in the Solid Waste Authority, doesn't require us to do anything, but gives us the authority to be a member and receive information. Did we receive any written communications?
We did not.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public that has any input on the ordinance? Board members? Any questions? Comments?
A little bit of background, the Town of Granby has been a member of CSWA via ordinance for about 10 years. This is an amendment that is deemed in the best interest of the towns, so that each time CSWA makes an amendment to their bylaws, we don't need to make them to ours. So this is really a bit of governmental housecleaning that happened about 10 years after you became a member.
All right. I don't see any public comment or any questions or comments, we'll close the hearing, and we'll take action on the ordinance as part of our regularly scheduled agenda at 7:00. So we'll reconvene at 7:00 for our regular meeting. Thank you. Excuse me, everybody. Forgive me, my allergies are acting up, so I'm going to try to get through the meeting without my voice totally cracking. And we will start with the pleasure of allegiance, Mr. Walsh can lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the approval of our minutes from our September 16th meeting.
Move that we approve the meeting, regular meeting minutes of September 16th?
Second.
All right, any questions, comments, suggested revisions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? You're good, Kelly, thank you. So I should have said that at the very beginning of the meeting, Peggy is excused tonight, and Kelly is here on Zoom, so thank you for joining us, Kelly. All right, the next item on our agenda is a list of vacancies, so for those of you out there who know people who are interested in getting more involved in the community, we currently have vacancies on our Conservation Commission and our Park and Recreation Board. So please point people to Town Hall if they're interested. We have no old business, so we'll move right into new business. The first item is the formal adoption of the CRCOGCCSWA ordinance, which is our solid waste ordinance. For those of you that weren't here at 6:45, we held a public hearing on that ordinance, we're updating our solid waste ordinance just to kind of catch up with some changes that had been made over the last few years to get us back in conformance with those. So you have anything else to add on that, Mike?
No, very briefly, for the public, the amendment that the Board of Selectmen is acting on tonight, after the public hearing, simply allows membership and voting process to eliminate the need of each municipal member to adopt an amendment concurrent ordinance with each future bylaw amendment. So it's simply a governance change to make things a little bit more seamless. The Town of Granby has been a member of CSWA for about a decade, we will continue to do so, it gives us options in the market. We currently are with Paines, who do a wonderful job, but in the event we ever need to bid the work out, this would be the ordinance we would do it under.
Any questions? Board members? If not, I'd accept the proposed motion.
I propose that we move that the Board of Selectmen approve the attached resolution and Exhibit A in its entirety, replacing Pan-Ordinance, Chapter 44, Article II, Sections 44-2 through 44-13.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is discussion regarding the potential acquisition of 87 Simsbury Road, so here's what we'll do, I'm going to give just a brief overview, I imagine most of you in the room know it, but I'll go through it, ask Mike if he has anything to add. We'll go to the board members first, in case you have any preliminary questions, I know you've seen these documents a couple times. Then we'll take public comment, and then we'll go back to the board. We do not intend to take action tonight, there's nothing to be read into that one way or another, I just wanted to have the board to have time to be able to digest any comments that we got tonight. So this will be scheduled again on our meeting on the 21st for possible action. So we're looking at acquiring the old Methodist church out next to Holcomb Farm, we've been working very closely with the Hartford Foundation and their representatives. If you're not familiar, initially that property was donated to the Methodist Church, it had a deed restriction, that if it was no longer used as a church, it would revert and be transferred to the Hartford Foundation. We've been working with them to acquire it at no cost to the town, with the idea of incorporating it back into Holcomb Farm, so we've been working with our community partners, the Friends of Holcomb Farm primarily, and the Granby Land Trust. So in our backup tonight, you'll see a number of documents related to it, the first is the actual agreement in which we would acquire it from the Hartford Foundation, actually their representative who owns it now. We asked for our council to provide us an opinion letter, but it was safe for us to acquire the property, so we got an environmental opinion letter from our council. And you also see in the backup, we've referred this matter to our Planning and Zoning Commission for an opinion on whether it was consistent with our plan of conservation and development, and they have opined that it is, they support the acquisition. And then there are two other related agreements, one is with the Friends of Holcomb Farm, so generally if we acquire this property, the Friends have agreed to incorporate it into their existing deal, if you guys are familiar with that, they have a long-term lease and land use agreement, so they would immediately take responsibility in possession of the land and the buildings on the land, and it would be governed by all the provisions of the existing agreement. They've also committed to doing a analysis for us on whether some or all a portion of the church should try to be saved and maintained, or whether it would make more sense to tear the church down. The reason we're doing that, as you guys probably know, is that the building was vacant for a while, but it was also vacant for a while with a leaky roof, so we're going to go in and do a detailed analysis on whether it's cost-effective to keep the building or not. So under their agreement, I think that we gave them six months to give us a detailed report on what we should do, the town will remain, will keep full discretion on whether to tear the building down or not. And then we also have an agreement with the Land Trust to fund up to a certain dollar amount, the cost of demolishing the building, if that's in fact what we decide to do. So it's a great opportunity for us to continue to preserve that area and expand what we've been doing out at Holcomb Farm, and like everything that happens in this town at Holcomb Farm, we couldn't have done it without our community partners being able to work together. So do you have anything to add on that, Mike?
Very quick three things, a deep debt of gratitude to the Hartford Foundation for public giving, for engaging the Town of Granby in this exercise. I want to thank the residents who have reached out, either predominantly by email, but either by telephone or email in support of this transaction. And also, we received a fairly large report today from GeoQuest, it's the Phase 1 environmental report on 87 Simsbury Road, that has gone to Rich Roberts Towns Corporation Council, and I've read it myself, there are nothing in there that's a surprise to us, but the update of the GeoQuest report allows us to further insulate us in the event that the conveyance agreement covers certain environmental liabilities that we will not have full responsibility for those if they in fact existed. So all good from my end, and again, to those who are involved in this, sincere thank you.
Board members? Kelly, you have anything initially?
No, I have to stop.
All right. Ben?
No.
Anybody? Preliminary comments or questions? Okay, so we'll take public comment, we're going to follow the normal rules that we follow for a public session, so it's a five-minute time limit, if you haven't been through that with us before, we actually set the timer and alarm will go off, that's so that we're not distracted watching the timer. But if you get that far and the timer goes off, we'll just ask you to wrap up, tell us what you think, should we do the deal, should we not do the deal, do you have questions about the deal, do you have any questions about the documents? Who wants to go first? Come on up, Bud.
My name is Bud Brown, and I live with my wife, Nanny, at 16 Broad Hill Road in West Granby. I was a close personal friend of Tudor and Laura Holcombs, but tonight I speak on behalf of the Granby Land Trust. One of the Land Trust's key priorities is the preservation of Granby's agricultural land. The return of the former church property to agricultural use accomplishes that result and also enhances the integrity of the federally designated West Granby Historic District. That's an area in which the Granby Land Trust has been very active in the past couple of years, as you all know. When Tudor and Laura left the land, or gave the land to the church, they incorporated a contingency provision in their deed, if the land was not used for ecclesiastical purposes, and that was the word they used, it was to be transferred to the Hartford Foundation for public giving. Sadly, the church failed, so as Tudor and Laura dictated, the property was deeded to the Hartford Foundation without conditions. It's important to note that while they had created separate charitable funds at the Hartford Foundation, they did not require that the church property or the proceeds of its sale be added to those funds, instead, the property would be used or disposed of in accordance with the Foundation's current charitable priorities. It's important to remember this, Tudor and Laura did not write the rules this time, the Foundation, they knew or hoped, would do the right thing. At first, the Foundation thought that the best thing to do would be to sell the property and apply the proceeds to its general charitable operating funds for distribution in accordance with their current allocation priorities. Accordingly, they transferred the property to the Decame Asset Trust, which exists and its purpose is to operate on behalf of charities throughout the nation to liquidate non-cash gifts. In this case, Decame would sell the property and apply that proceeds by paying them back to the Hartford Foundation for distribution by the Foundation. Mark Fiorentino, on behalf of the town, and Mike Walsh on behalf of the town, and Jenny Emery on behalf of the Friends of Holcomb Farm urged the Foundation to consider a joint proposal, which was for an arrangement very different from the one the Foundation had already put into motion. Representatives of the Land Trust also played an important role, and agreed to commit significant funds to support the effort. Following a free exchange of ideas, the Foundation came to understand how important the former church parcel was, or is, to the farm's agricultural activities, and how significant the farm's output is to the region. To its enormous credit, and with thanks for its flexibility in changing its mind to do the right thing, as Mike said, the Foundation considered the new proposal, added its own conditions, and agreed to the consensus arrangement. So here we are now, putting into motion a very simple arrangement, at no cost to the town, the Foundation is willing to instruct Decame to convey the former church property to the town for incorporation back into the farm. All that needs to happen now is for the Board of Selectmen to accept the offer. It's an extraordinary opportunity and a win for everybody. As a friend and neighbor of Tudor and Laura's, and as a representative of the Granby Land Trust, I urge the Board of Selectmen to do the right thing and accept the arrangement. Thank you.
Thank you, Bud. Any questions for Bud? All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Who's next?
Good evening. My name is Eric Lukingbeal, I've been a board member of the Friends of Holcomb Farm for many years, and I'm here tonight, I can be very brief, I want to thank the Board of Selectmen and everybody who has worked on this project for the opportunity to explore the potential uses of the church building, and in any event, to restore the land to the farm for agricultural purposes. The mission of the Friends of Holcomb Farm for many years has been to preserve, promote, and utilize an historic working farm. We see all the tools we need here to do that, and we urge the Board of Selectmen to approve the offer on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Who's next? Yeah, you guys don't have to raise your hand, just come on up. Come on, Mark.
Good evening. My name's Mark Williams, my wife and I live at 68 Simsbury Road, and we also own the property at 73 Simsbury Road, and so we are the only private property owners that abut the former church property. And I want to thank all the town officials and leaders of the Friends of the Holcomb Farm, and also the Land Trust leaders, who worked very hard in acquiring, or about to inquire, acquire this property, the former church property, and to hammer out an agreement that to me makes a great deal of sense. We knew Tudor and Laura Holcomb when we first moved to Granby, some 53 years ago, and they were kind enough to sell us some of their property, a 11-acre parcel behind our house that they had used when they were in the farming business. And my wife and I have recently acquired the property across the street at 73 Simsbury Road, which abuts the old church property. Two-thirds of that property were also part of Tudor and Laura's farm at one point, and were sold to the Harthens. My wife and I consider it kind of a sacred trust that Tudor and Laura put in us to do the right thing with our property, and so ever since then, we have had, I won't say rent, because that's not quite accurate, we have had farmers using our property for agricultural purposes, and we intend to continue that, even though there's certainly enough land to sell and develop it, we would never do that. So I'm very thankful that the town is also proceeding in that direction, it seems, and commend all of your actions so far.
Thank you. Who's next?
Hello, my name's Steve Perry, I'm 41 Heather Lane, North Granby, also a board member of the Friends of Holcomb Farm, but we really want to support this opportunity to look at the acquisition, bringing this property back to Holcomb Farm for agricultural purposes. As you know, the farm is a gem to this community, the farming itself, but also all the trails and the tree trail that it brings, and having this piece come back into the farm for what we might be able to use it for, and the farm use it for, would be tremendous, and I encourage you to pull on that way, appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve.
My name is Dana Warren, and I'm from West Granby, and I was born here, and I am back here again after being away for a while, so it's a privilege to be here, and I appreciate you all for these efforts for this application. I am definitely in support of the acquisition, and so I have a unique perspective, not only am I from the neighborhood, but I was raised in that church as well. And so when I heard the words "the old church," I thought, well, wait, that's the new building, because my roots go back to the building that preceded it. So I'm also an abutter to the tree trail, so an abutter to Holcomb used land, and actively a part of the neighborhood again with Holcomb Farm. I am also a commercial architect, and my specialty has come from, I started off in the roots of municipal and public buildings. So in the, I think of this in three parts, past, present, and future, and I think of my past and my roots, and the past of the church, the past of the land, and then the present, and the present problems we have, and the solutions we need to find for the future. So as I have been working with Holcomb Farm over this last year to sort of brainstorm a little bit of how do they saw, the Friends of Holcomb Farm, and the sustainability of the farm through the, all seasons, through the winter, and we've looked at tobacco barns, we've looked at how do we help them grow and sustain their programs, and I stood there looking at the church going, what's happening with the church? And so here we are right now, it's a beautiful, it was like a wish come true in a way. So in the present moment, we're right here right now, and we're looking at the future. And in speaking with Jenny and members of the board at the farm, I've committed to help volunteer some efforts toward help figuring out what do we do with this, what are the options, what's the best use of this property and this building going forward. My dad was on the building committee of that building, and I know we're speaking of the whole property, but I happen to know the building, and as I mentioned to some of you previously, my dad was belt and suspenders guy, right, which means he didn't trust just the belt or just the suspenders, he wore them both, right? So he was on the building committee, and anybody that ever heard of or knows my dad, or knew my dad, would know that he didn't take engineering, math, or physics lightly, and so that building deserves some consideration. So I'm privileged to be a part of helping to steer us into who and how to consider it. And I think overall, just in looking back, I remember Tudor Holcomb too, I was yay high, but I remember his 90th birthday in the center of the building with the cake, with the train, and it just, the roots go back to the love of nature, the love of the land. I was thinking about it today, and I thought, my mom would probably remember, I ruined a lot of Easter dresses in the river behind the church, because that's what we did, we didn't just go to church in the building, we went to church on that land, and it was important. And I keep hearing the phrase tonight that is simply "do the right thing," and I think too, is, for me personally, my moral compass came from that land, and "do the right thing" just comes up, and so I really appreciate that everyone is here to help say, what's the right thing? So thank you.
Dana, I will tell you, the first time you told me that story about the belt and suspenders, you got me a long way towards recognizing there might be some value in that building that I wasn't seeing, so thank you for the time you put in already.
You're welcome, you just gave me chills, I appreciate that, yeah. Yeah, and by the way, since then, I did stumble upon portions of drawings of the building, and a lot of it is, as some of us suspected, that there's, there could be some solidity there to look at, it merits looking at, you know, so I do appreciate always a possibility. You know, my role as an architect is to say, put everything on the table, what do we know, what don't we know? Let's ask questions, let's pose possibilities, and then weigh them. So there's no right or wrong, it's, let's all put it out there and weigh it, so thank you for that.
Thank you. All right, who's next? Anybody else in the room? So everybody else is here for the Mountain Road acquisition?
I don't think it's getting ahead of things, though.
I didn't recognize you with your Yankee hat.
With the farm, I can't say it off its bedlock.
They didn't tell you you can't wear that hat?
It's a real thing. Joel Grady, 115 Simsbury Road, Holcomb Farm, Farm Manager. Yeah, just to piggyback off what Dana was saying, is the timing of this is fascinating, because we were just looking at massive grants and how to renovate our existing barn for more office space, because we've grown, we keep growing, and we are crowded and cramped and need space. Renovating an old tobacco barn was proving very complicated and very expensive. I don't want to put, you know, count chickens before they hatch, but there's this building right next to us that might be sound and usable. Also, land is an issue, there's the agricultural, the amount of agricultural land that's there is not significant, but when you put green, if you would put greenhouses on it, the value of that increases exponentially. So this is getting ahead of things, Bud, I'm really excited about the potential and possibility of acquiring this and adding it to the Holcomb Farm, it's got electricity, it's got water, it's right near our home compound, backyard screams for greenhouses. We just did a winter, our winter CSA is back this year, it's sold out in five days. There is a huge demand for what we're doing in the summer and in the winter, we just need more land for more hoop houses, so we can grow more in the winter. We need better space, better indoor space, so we can accommodate more people, sell other farm products throughout the winter, because right now, we just do it in our, we do it in the greenhouse, our winter distribution, where it's just been hodgepodge, and it's not ideal. So seeing this come up as a possibility, right next door, indoor space, a barn, it's got a barn next to it, it's got land with water and electricity, yeah, so again, I appreciate you guys looking into this, working on it, and I hope it happens, because I'm all for it. And if there's any questions about what the farm plans are for, it's too early, but I'd be interested in talking about it.
Thank you, Joel. Anybody else in the room? Anybody on Zoom? All right, seeing none, we'll take it back to the board. Any questions or comments at this point? I'd ask the board then, to the extent that you haven't already, you know, go through the agreements before our next meeting, because we'll try to take action in our next meeting. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Have you read the agreements, Ben?
Not yet. I will. All memorized before.
I tell you what, because I know you're busy on lots of other stuff, how about you just read one of the four?
Okay, that'll be my home one.
All right. All right, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is very similar. We will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is very similar. It's a proposed acquisition of 229 Mountain Road. We'll let the, thank you, thank you, everybody. Take a brief pause and let folks make their way out. So the Mountain Road site, I think everybody again is probably familiar with this. It's a critical component of our emergency communications project. We needed to acquire a site, has an old AM radio tower on it that we would dismantle and replace with a new tower that's necessary for us to rebuild our system. So the agreement is pretty straightforward as far as real estate agreements go. It's, it's a part of our backup. Invite you to read it if you want. This my acquisition was also referred to our Planning and Zoning Commission. They also deemed it to be consistent with our Plan of Conservation and Development and support the acquisition. Two other points for those of you who are interested. So the sales price that is in the agreement is actually based on an appraisal report that we did about a year and a half ago, so it matches up almost exactly to the value an appraiser assigned to it. And the cost of this project was included in the budget that we put in front of the voters, and the voters approved last March. So it's part of that overall project cost that the voters have already approved. Miss anything?
No, I simply want to extend a thank you to Brian Pierce as he negotiated the other side of this transaction, and we look forward to bring it home next meeting. I see Chief Orr is on the, on Teams if he has any thoughts. It'd be good time now, Chief.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Do you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, as you pointed out, Mark, this is Key Door. Our new system is one of five power sites. It's the only one that we have to acquire. The others are existing sites that we worked out access for. It's the kind of niche thing. Interestingly enough, this is a site all that the Granby Police Department used to be on this site back about 25 years ago, the, with the old system. But this will give us excellent coverage. It fills in a void in the coverage maps primarily for the area of North Granby, which without it, it leaves the area from North Granby Center to the Grand Ole Line would be exposed to have poor coverage. It's also key in that it has great access points to the other tower so they can communicate well. And they're designed towers such that there can be a significant add of new equipment in the future. So that gives us a lot of opportunities if something comes up in the future for our needs. So I definitely recommend, as Mark pointed out, this was included in the pricing. The cost to raise the existing tower, bring it down, build in the new tower, the new pad, the power run, the new road, et cetera, was all part of the budget plan that was approved by the town for the radius system. It's all in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Before I go to the board members, I, thank you, Chief, for reminding me also, I've had people actually ask us, why don't we do this as a private tower and let a private, you know, communications company come in and, and build it and operate it and then just give us space on it? We actually discussed that in a fair amount of detail as we went through this project. The tower is going to be designed to accommodate that later. So we, as the chief just said, there'll be space on the tower if we ultimately want to go in and lease portions of the tower out to private companies we can. But we thought it prudent, at, at least initially, to control the process because our, our emergency communication needs are the primary needs. And so if us controlling and getting the tower up is, is of significant importance, if we get to the point in the future where it makes some sense to take some bids to add to the tower, we will, we certainly will have the capacity to do that. And I also thank you, Mike, for thanking the Pierce family. I, I think my first meeting with, on this was a year or so ago, and they've been very accommodating. They certainly had no obligation to work with the town or, or to work on something that was fair, but they were very, very welcoming and willing to work with us. So having said that, board members, any questions? I know, again, this is something you've seen a couple of times. Members of the public, come on up.
Jay Martin, 249 Mountain Road. We have also 245 Mountain Road, which is the abutting piece. And I just could not find anywhere in the town documents that I've seen, the proposed location of the tower, will it be intended to be in the same place as the existing tower? Or it refers to the rear of the property, which is essentially a U shape with a large square portion in the rear, which is where, depending on the height, where I would probably need to be if it's another 200-foot tall tower, so it wouldn't fall onto other properties. Is there any, any specifics as, as of this time where the tower would actually be sighted?
Yeah, very good question, Jay. Thank you for, for, I would invite you and ask you to come down to Town Hall anytime in the next couple of days, so I can give you the general, it's in the general vicinity of the existing tower. The precise, precise location is, hasn't been engineered yet, but if you come down, we have a drawing that shows what portion of that, because we're carving out a portion of that existing property, what portion we're taking, and roughly where the tower will be. It's closer to the road than it is to the...
Closer to the road?
Well, I don't want to give the impression that it's close to the road, but it's, it's in the middle of the property roughly. But if you come down and just ask Abby, she can, she'll have a map.
And what is the proposed height of the tower?
Chief, do you remember off the top of your head?
108. 108 feet. So the existing tower is 100, I believe 100, 112, and the new tower is 18.
So the property is 200 feet wide, so if it's anywhere other than the rear of that property, if it were to fall, and it's referring to an easement for the fall zone, if it's located anywhere near where it is now, and it's close to 200 feet high, it would not only potentially fall onto our property at 245, but also the house at 233.
You don't need to worry about that. So come, come look at the map because we specifically designed the location to accommodate the entire fall zone, the entire radius. So if you'll come down and ask Abby, she can show you precisely on a map.
I think last week she didn't have it at that time.
Oh, all right.
I've got it right here, so if you give me your email address, I'll be happy to send it to you.
In fact, your phone will probably ding right now. Sorry, fishing, yes. All right, anybody else? Thank you, Jay. We'll get, we'll get you the exact information.
Rick Hirschbaum, I, 147 Silky Road, which abuts the site, I believe, only because I see the little pink boundary markers there. So I have similar questions and concerns about exactly where this tower is going to be. And is there an existing access road to the tower? Or is there a new access, I assume a road would have to go?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna cut a new access road to the tower.
And do we know where that is?
We know generally the location, yes.
Is it on the south side of Pierce's property?
I believe it is. Chief, do you know? Is it on the...
Yeah, the, the new, the new road, the draft that the engineer has done is on the property we're acquiring. So the current access is up through the driveway to the abutting house, but the new road will be out through the property that we acquired. So it'll, it'll be coming in from outroad somewhere in the area where the utilities come in today.
So Doc, we'll do this. Send an email so we don't forget to Mike Walsh. And what we'll do, the, the, the tower hasn't been completely engineered yet, so some of these details are still being worked out a little bit. They're doing the surveys now, for example. But what I think we'll do is we'll put together a meeting of you and Jay and anybody else that owns property out there, who are neighbors, and have all the drawings there in the room where he can ask questions, and we could give you specific answers. Does that work?
Yeah, I also include the sales. My neighbors, their, their property has also been pink tagged off, so.
Okay. So we'll give you a second to speak as well, express your concerns and ask questions, but make sure you email Mike, both of you. Anybody in the room is interested about this. And then when we get to the point, and we're, it's close, where we can show you detailed drawings, we'll bring everybody in and show you and put you around a conference table so we can answer the questions specifically. Does that make sense?
Yep. The last question is, the amount of property that was transferred, is it in excess of what is necessary to do the tower?
I don't want to Bill Clinton you, but I guess it depends on your definition of necessary. So it's a big enough piece of property, way bigger than we would need just for the tower, but it's a big enough piece to accommodate the utilities and the roadway and to, to accommodate a fall radius. So if for some reason the tower goes down, this property is big enough so the tower stays on this property. Does that make sense?
That, that makes sense, but...
Did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi there. Emily A. Sales, also 143 Silky Road. So similar to what others have said, our first notification of this was walking the back property lines and seeing all the pink surveyors tape. So similarly, just interested in what the plan looks like. I think a lot of those questions have been answered. It sounds like it's going to be larger than the existing structure, so just looking for a little bit more information on the structure, the access. We have, you know, large parcels of property back there and want to preserve it being great open space and preserved space. So that's really the interest of understanding what the long-term plan is, and also understanding of other locations where there are existing towers. If we looked into leveraging, I believe it's 30 Higley Road, and it's really 10 Day Street South, if there are existing privately owned towers that we could leverage versus building something new as well. So those were kind of some thoughts as to the background before we got to this point. But I know that we're already in negotiation and otherwise, so just seeking more information on the impact for those that live pretty, pretty close to this new structure.
So let me answer those in that order. Again, make sure Mike has your email, we'll sit down and show you. And yes, I think we're probably three years into analyzing this system and looking at all the other towers and all the other potential locations, not just existing towers, but other sites that we might acquire to build a new one. And this is really the, without adding two or three more towers substantially, this was really the only one that worked. And we, we hired an outside engineering firm to analyze all that. If you're interested in all that technical data, we could get it for you because we have it. But yes, we absolutely did that analysis.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom? Chief, did I say anything wrong? Anything you ought to correct?
No, everything, everything was correct. Then the, I mean, the big key of the question that came up regarding other towers, the issue is, in order to keep the cost down, we chose towers that had good line of sight to each other. So technically, they're going to communicate by radio to each other. Some of the other tower sites that are mentioned don't, are too low and can't see other towers. So it would cost us significantly more for a fiber optic to make those towers communicate, and that's why they weren't chosen. So again, we have all that data, as you pointed out, we can talk to that data, and I'll bring that to the public session later this month.
All right. Thank you. Board members? Mark?
I'm glad we're moving forward on this. I noticed it's proposed motion tonight, but I also heard you say that we're not going to act on this tonight, we're going to act on it next meeting?
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll do the same as we did with the Simsbury Road.
Okay.
We'll put it back on the agenda so everybody has two more weeks to look carefully at the documents. All right, anybody else? Mr. Walsh, we're going to need you back up here.
I'll tell you, this guy's community relations skills are outstanding.
His first selectman relations skills are failing. Thank you, Mike. All right, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the GMEA Job Descriptions and Reorganization. It's an item for our approval tonight. That's why I needed you back because you did the work with our team to get these in place, so why don't you tell us what we need to know?
Sure. So this is the culmination of a couple of different things. If you recall, we originally reorganized initially Parks and Recreation because the director had left, and then subsequently, we also did Parks and Recreation. This was the reorganization negotiation that took place with GMEA, and it was approximately seven job descriptions. In the package, it explains, there's copies of the job descriptions and in general why they were made. There's also a copy of the memorandum of understanding. Kudos go out to Scott Nolan, who is the GMEA point of contact for the town. And I'll certainly step back and take any questions, but really, essentially what you had was the director of the organization leave, and those responsibilities had to be absorbed somewhere. So everybody took a little bit of additional responsibility, and that's reflected in the memorandum of understanding. And I just want to single out those people who stepped up to the plate and took on a portion of the responsibilities, both in Parks and Recreation and both in the senior services organization. That includes the director, Sandy Yost, the three supervisors at Park and Rec, Terri's and Nikki, Daphne Schinder, Jamie Saba, and then over at the senior services, which includes Jennifer Kilbasa and Vanessa Birelli. Lisa Pyatt was more part of the Public Works negotiation, but she is in this union, so that was covered under this agreement. And then from, on behalf of the town side, Kimmy Chang, Betsy Mazada, and Krista Schaefer, as well as Scott, who I previously mentioned, all played instrumental roles. So this is the culmination of that. And if you recall, we put this into place very early in March, and we promised the union we would revisit it on June 30th, and it took us much of the summer to get to this negotiation. I do like the organization better. I believe it streamlines it. It gives additional responsibilities to people who are ready to accept the challenge, and it distributes the money accordingly. There is some savings, about 50% on behalf of the town, and these individuals have more autonomy and more of a stake in the jobs that they had previously. I'll kick it to Scott in case he has any additional questions. If there was anything I missed, certainly now would be the time.
No, I think you did a really nice job summing it up. On behalf of GMEA, we'd like to thank the town manager and the town for a successful negotiation.
Yeah, good work, everybody. This is part of the long-range stuff that I'm very grateful that you guys are willing to work on. Your team has done a great job streamlining the organization and providing some capacity for people to do more and provide better service to our citizens. So it's great work. Board members, any questions? Kelly, you have anything?
No, I'm all set. Thanks.
All right. If everybody's good, I would, there's a proposed motion on the first page of the memorandum I would accept.
I move that the board of selectmen approve the seven amended job descriptions as detailed in the September 24th, 2024 memo provided by Human Resources Director Krista Schaefer, attached to the September 30th, 2024 memo from the town manager, Mike Walsh.
Second to motion.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Anybody opposed? All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is GMEA Job Descriptions for the Library and Library Services Department. Library Services Department. Take it away, Mike.
This one is a little less complicated than the one you just voted on. Along the same lines, the job descriptions of two particular positions at the library, one, the children's and teen librarian, and two, the branch manager, adult program coordinator, weren't consistently, the duties were not consistently allocated among the people who actually held the jobs. So the union worked with the town. We realign each job description and consistent with the charter, those job descriptions come forward to you. In this particular case, there's no money involved. It simply aligns the description with the job that the person is actually doing, and it comes to you for approval, and then it'll be blended into the next contract when it opens in about four years.
Board members, any questions or comments? If not, I'd accept the motion.
Okay, I'll jump in. I move that the board of selectmen approve the two amended library GMA job descriptions as detailed in the September 24, 2024 memo provided by Human Resource Director Krista Schaefer, attached to the September 25, 2024 memo from Town Manager Mike Walsh.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, anybody opposed? Thank you. Move on to the next item, which is to select BFJ Planning as a consultant to assist in the development of the Town Center Master Plan. Abby did do a memo, the backup, I can summarize it very quickly. I think I reported out on this in one of our recent meetings. The committee is continuing to do its work. We interviewed two, we did an RFP for consultants, I think we got seven or eight responses. We narrowed those down to two. We interviewed both of them. It was very close. I mean, either one of them would have been a tremendous asset to the town. But at the end of the day, as you'll see in the backup, they're recommending this particular consultant. The board has to approve and authorize Mike to negotiate the final contract with them. And then in our first meeting with the new consultant at the end of this month, we're going to start working through development of the master plan. I guess I will remind everybody, in case you're still interested, all the Town Center Committee meetings are held by Zoom, and they're recorded. And that included the process we used to vet the consultants and to interview. Their interviews are available. You can watch them on the recordings. You can watch our deliberation in why we chose the one we did. Any questions? As the memo points out, we've already dedicated ARPA funds for this cost.
Correct.
Any questions? Before you give the motion, I'm assuming you're going to do a motion to hire them. Mike, I just want to make sure. There is a little bit of negotiations that I think we have to do to find a license contract, and Abby and I can work out the details with you. We just got to get from their budget to specific tax in the process. So the reason I bring that up is to make sure that the motion at least implicitly gives Mike the authority to negotiate whatever terms are left to negotiate.
That looks like it.
All right, were you going to make a motion?
Sure. Yeah, I move that the board of selectmen approve the hiring of BFJ Planning for the Granby Center Master Plan and authorize the town manager to execute any and all required documents.
Second the motion.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? All right, the next item on the agenda is from Scott. It's the COTT System Resolution Three Services Renewal Contract.
Yeah, so just a little bit of background on this item. So as I believe I previously mentioned, our master agreement with COT Systems Incorporated is set to expire in January in 2025. So we are in the process of renewing that contract. Just a little bit of a background on what this piece of software in our contract does for the town clerk's office. So we use a software program called Resolution Three through COT, and it really is kind of the heartbeat to the entire office. It does a number of things for us, including indexing and recording our land records, but it also helps us keep track of all of the transactions that come through the office, whether it's hunting and fishing licenses, birth, marriage, and death records. You name it, really. This piece of software is helping the clerk's office, you know, perform the necessary functions. I'm sure, as I've mentioned in the past, the town clerk's office runs very heavily off of Connecticut State statutes. There are a number of statutes that are taken into consideration. Making this our COT contract, they actually help us meet many of those statutory mandates through this software. So we are in the process of looking to renew our contract. We have until November 2 to make a decision and get back to them in writing on whether we're going to renew with them or not. I would like to point out that unfortunately, the renewal for the 36 months does come with a roughly 20% increase with some services that they are no longer offering to the town, one of which is our previous contract came with, they would provide us the, what we call the books in the paper. The town clerk's office, per statute, has to record the land records on specialized paper, and those are stored in the town vault. Those are all those red books you see when you walk through the town vault. And then the other thing they are no longer providing to us is microfilm storage. Per statute, the clerks are required to create microfilm of all the permanent records and store them in an off-site underground facility. COT had been doing that for a number, for us for a number of years, and they are no longer providing that service. I have considered some other vendors out there. There are three that I know that are pretty renowned around the state. The leading competitor, the second one, New Vision Systems Corporation, is actually roughly a $5,000 increase from the current vendor they're doing. So I'm looking to propose that we renew with our COT Systems Incorporated vendor. Any questions?
Do you have anything more?
I will just add some general thoughts, not specific to COT. So software for municipalities, whether it's financial software, payroll software, the software that the police department runs dispatch and records on, whether it's COT, basically comes in three flavors. It comes in, there's two things we look at, price and functionality. You can usually get low-cost systems with little functionality, medium-cost systems at medium functionality, and high-cost systems with high-cost functionality. Someone here, and I want to say it was prior to you, Scott, chose COT. It is a solid system. It's not the least expensive, but we believe that it holds out the best opportunity for Scott to do a number of automation outlays from dog licenses to other things within the department. So I won't sit here and tell you that the 20%, the increase, we take lightly. But the option to go out to another vendor doesn't necessarily produce, one, the functionality we would like, and, two, result in any cost savings. So I am in agreement with Scott that COT Systems at this juncture is the best decision for the town.
I have a couple of questions around the increase. Is this 20% increase, is that because now we're buying the supplies that they used to provide for us?
Correct. Yes. So I'm averaging about seven books a year. Obviously, this fluctuates, depends on what comes in for document reportings.
Okay. And then I think I know the answer. We anticipate this increase in the budget, right?
Yes. Yeah. So we'll see, we start budget proposals in March, you will see all of this listed in my next budget. It's broken down a little bit further.
But for the six months remaining in this fiscal year, I think we also considered some cost increases, didn't we?
Yeah, there was. Because we anticipated some of this.
Okay. Any other questions?
It's a three-year, or is it?
It's the next contract will run for 36 months.
Great. Sorry about that. All right.
If there isn't any further questions, I'd accept the proposed motion.
Okay. Be it resolved that the board of selectmen hereby authorizes Mike Walsh as town manager of the Town of Granby to sign, execute, and deliver to COT System Resolution Three Services Renewal Contract on behalf of the Town of Granby, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of each document, or such documents.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Connecticut DOT Grant Agreement for the Griffin Road Bridge. Mike?
I'm going to actually speak to two bridges, one that you're probably more familiar with and another one that you're not. The one that you're familiar with is the Griffin Road Bridge. That was part of a $13.7 million bond initiative in 2019. There were a total of five bridges, and Griffin Road was one of them. I am happy to report that that $13.7 million of expected expenditures was more like 8.8 million. A number of those were either 50, 80%, and in some cases, 100% reimbursable by the Department of Transportation. Sometimes that's state bond money, sometimes that's federal bond money passed through the Department of Transportation. We also, as a result of the lower cost, had lower grant reimbursements coming in. The books balance, so with respect to the Griffin Road Bridge, what we're asking is the ability for me to sign, number one, I was not the town manager in 2019, but I also did not find in the bond records where the town manager previously came to you looking for authorization to document or to initialize the grant document. So that's number one. You're familiar with the five bridges. You're familiar with the amount of money they're going forward. I'm simply asking you to allow me to authorize and execute the documents necessary to facilitate receipt of the grant. I just did not see it anywhere in the bond documents in the past. Number two, I want to tell you a little story about the Dougherty Bridge. The good folks at the Connecticut Department of Transportation, as we were talking about the Griffin Road Bridge, and they said, hey, Walsh, we need these documents authorized shortly, we discussed Dougherty Bridge. Dougherty was not part of the original five, and although we could have put it as a question on the upcoming November election, it became complicated because of the early voting. It became complicated because our electors are not the same people, at least 100% of them who can own property and who can vote on a bridge project. So we're moving this to April, we believe, as part of the budget referendum process. We will add a question similar to the radio program, the emergency communications, which was asked of the voters last year. And this is simply to take some of the existing money that is excess that the voters have already approved, that we already have in the bank, and to spend it on the Dougherty Bridge. Now, the reason I bring it up is DOT has reminded us, because of the flooding in Oxford and because of the flooding in Tennessee, that if we don't get this done in April, they will not be able to hold the money over any longer, and we will lose the reimbursement. So we appreciate our friends at the Connecticut DOT for allowing us to hold the Dougherty Bridge over, to use the money that the voters have already approved, and simply make it a legal transaction by asking the voters one more time in April. So again, on Griffin Road, we're simply getting the documents that need to be executed in place. And then in April, provided we get the question from Pullman and Comley, our bond council is working on that as we speak. We'll go through the budget. We'll add this question. The money that's already in the bank on Dougherty, we'll be able to execute another grant arrangement, and that will be preserved. The money, which is 50% of the bridge, about 1.13 million or so, will be provided for Dougherty. So good news on both accounts. We're getting on Griffin Road. We're closing the record on something that already has happened. And on Dougherty, we're opening up a new record to welcome more grant money in on behalf of the Town of Granby.
Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, if not, I will accept the proposed motion.
I move that the board of selectmen approve the grant agreement between the state of Connecticut and the Town of Granby under the local bridge grant program, and direct town manager Mike Walsh to execute all documents necessary to facilitate receipt of this grant and any and all available supplement grants related to the Griffin Road Bridge.
Second the motion.
Any further discussion? All right. If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? All right, we'll move on to the town manager's report dated September 30.
Thank you, Mark. I certainly encourage everybody to go out onto the website under agenda items for this meeting. There's a link to the town manager's report as of September 30. I'll highlight a few things because I think they're important for the community to know. But if you want the whole bit of information that's going on, certainly I'll direct you to the report. I held a tri-town Granby ambulance meeting and have a good handle on the issues. So as we move toward the budget, I'll be able to provide a little bit more information so that we know where we're going with Granby Ambulance. We continue to analyze the building structure and proposals for the Fresh East property. We'll be coming forward with something probably within the next couple of months on that for the board of selectmen to consider. We completed a walkthrough of Karn School with interested developers. It closed September 27. We got four interesting proposals. Two are very attractive, so it will take us probably a couple, three months to work through those. I met with the Connecticut Green Bank, as well as Betsy was met with me. We are reviewing their recommendations for solar placement on both town properties and town buildings. We're going to probably, subject to Mark's approval, kick that over to the CPAC Committee, which is being resurrected soon, to understand where, if any place, they would like to do solar placement. Once I get the marching orders, I'll be coming back with numbers on each particular location. We gathered staff to clear board of selectmen edits to the town's personnel rules for final edits and approval. You might see that the first meeting in November. With respect to community development, progress continues at Station 280, and it is fire prevention week between October 6 and October 12. Residents are reminded to change smoke alarm batteries, and if your smoke alarm is more than 10 years old, please replace that. Human Resources, Krista has done some nice work. She continues form and process revisions, including the performance appraisal in the PAR form, which is basically a payroll adjustment form that comes in for anybody who has an adjustment. We are now completing background checks, including a national sex offender registry check for all positions with direct contact with minors and seniors. That's not to say we didn't do it in the past. This is now being completed through Human Resources. We also centralized pre-employment random drug screening for the Department of Public Works and senior center positions requiring such testing. To highlight some of the work, the very good work Kimmy's doing, she continued to work on the fiscal year audit. She continued to work on the ClearGov implementation with Betsy. She gathered, and this was no small feat, related documents and certificates for the four bridges for the final audit fieldwork for both the single and the federal and state audit. She prepared the audit transmittal letter, the management discussion and analysis, and statistical tables for the financial reports. Again, being a former finance director, those things were quite a bit of effort on Kimmy's part, so we thank her for it. Information technology, we continue in a partnership with the Board of Education, and John Lambert does excellent work. He has currently developing a design and equipment list for the senior center and Holcomb Farm audio video projects. We've done some improvements. We've done some improvements here from microphones to a different bit of sound system. We're replicating that for the senior center, so in the event we ever have a need to run a meeting with teams over at the senior center, we'll have those capabilities. He's also assisting the police department with internet network connection, security camera systems at the animal control and impound lot. They completed a complete network reconfiguration and upgrade at the police department. And finally, excuse me, and this is a bit disappointing to report, we continue to get persistent cybersecurity email phishing attempts, and they were quite noticeable in the month of August. So, thank you for John and his team for protecting us from that. Related to the police department, Chief Sansom submits that multiple officers were present at the Celebrate the Valley event. Officer Martinage and Officer Dufresne participated in armor training, where Officer Martinage participated in an active threat training in Clinton. Chief Sansom and Captain Laflamme met with Jeff Spence, the Salmon Brook Water District, and spoke about the security and operations of the district. Respectful, or related to crime, they served the search warrant with Homeland Security on some, an individual in town to make an arrest there, and they also served the search warrant where they procured 15 firearms, including assault rifles, which they now have in their possession. Kirk is always busy at Public Works, but the couple of things I simply wanted to highlight were Simsbury Road Bridge, plans are being drawn up, replacement's expected to be in 2027, and that is under the 100% grant program, and that program will be run by the state. I mentioned the Dority Bridge Road meeting was scheduled, the state to discuss their commitment, and we have gotten positive news from the state, as I mentioned, so that's a good thing. Fun fact from Amber and the library, over 10,000 items were circulated to out-of-town patrons in the last year. Granby Libraries lent over 7,000 items to consortium libraries. Granby patrons borrowed over 8,000 items from other consortium libraries. Museum passes were borrowed 300 times. Seven library volunteers contributed 364 hours of their time. They were young volunteers and also from the Granby Bear Transition Academy, which is great to see. Sandy Yost for Human Services, which now encompasses youth, parks and recreation, senior and social. Kitchen completion, the renovation was done at the end of August. Talent Show on September 30th had 10 acts. That included dancing, singing, instrumental, and art display. Walking path installation began on September 16th. It's moving along quickly and fairly efficiently. The basketball court resurfacing will be done last, and it will be completed as part of a walking path project. We do believe that will complete by December 1st, if not sooner. They administered the renters rebate program that closed on September 30th. They handled 55 applications. That's an increase over last year of 11. And it doesn't, I can't say it enough, the Town Clerk's Office, in conjunction with the Register of Voters, has been busy preparing for the November 5th, 2024 general election. Absentee ballots are available beginning on Friday, October 4th. And most importantly, as a reminder, 14 days of early voting will take place in the Town Hall Meeting Room, beginning October 21st through the 31st, and November 1st to the 3rd, between 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., with October 29th and 31st being voting hours from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Questions about early voting, feel free to contact the Register, contact the Register of Voters, 860-844-5322. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions? Seeing that, we'll move on to the First Selectmen Report. See, now, as my voice is almost entirely gone, I don't, I'll say whatever I have for our next meeting, and we will move on to the Selectmen Report. Mark?
I don't have anything to report.
Okay, good.
Nothing from me.
Kelly?
Nothing from me.
Ben?
All right, so first of all, I just like picked this up during the meeting. Mr. Walsh's plaque was in Ms. Chapel's, so I think they're in the wrong spot. I don't know. It just, it just occurred to me, so. Mr. Walsh was just not present during the meeting today, apparently.
Yes, nobody who knows him would confuse the two.
Yes. All right, so on the subject of high school, so on our, the sports front, we had all of our homecoming games on Friday and Saturday, which were all a smashing success. Everyone had a very entertaining, high-quality of play, which saw overall wins by most teams and highly exciting games by all. For, mostly for seniors, we have the college fair this Wednesday, so we have, I don't know the exact number, but it has to be almost 100 colleges coming in on Wednesday to offer the opportunity for us to reach out and talk to colleges face-to-face in a fair in our gym. And also, last week, on the subject of voting, we also had two voting officials from Granby come in and actually have seniors sign up for voting so that we can vote in this election, if we are able to, or the next election after this. And for Student Gov, we had a busy week last week, as we had the spirit week, so each day had a theme, say, Pinkout for Breast Cancer, USA, class colors, and so everyone had a good theme and spirit last week. We also are having the blood drive for the high schoolers, which is coming up on the 11th with the Red Cross. And then also, we are welcoming the new freshman government members who were just elected about a week ago. So, now, all grades are freshly, freshly represented. And also, last Friday, we had some very exciting entertainment, as we had the pep rally. So, we had everyone in the stands and having a fun show, where the seniors, of course, did win the tug-of-war, as they always should. That's it.
Ben, I have a question for you. One of the harebrained ideas I have when I stay up at night is that we should require, as a graduation requirement, that students register to vote. What do you think about that?
I mean, I wouldn't disagree with that.
All right, can you get that done with the Board of Ed people?
I'll talk with Key.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Ben? All right. If not, we'll move on into our public session. Anybody here in the room want to talk to us? Let me ask you a question for those who are in the room. Can you hear us better with these new mics?
No.
It's not on.
The speakers are not working. Replacing the speakers, we're better, Mike.
Okay. All right, well, that was a stupid question, then. I don't see anybody who wants to address us during the public session, so we have no need for an executive session. I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, Kelly.
Thanks, Kelly.